It's not there.
Good evening and welcome to the Notre Dame Member 24th, 2025 Legislative Action Meeting of the Happer-Horsham School District Board of School Directors. Please be advised that this meeting is being recorded. The opinions expressed by any member of the public do not necessarily reflect the views or opinions of the Happer-Horsham School District Board of School Directors and are solely those of the presenter. The Happer-Horsham District Board hereby expressly disclaims any and all responsibility or liability for any defamatory or slanderous statements expressed by any member of the public. If you could please stand for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
To the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the至尊神
Mr. Stone, if we could please have roll call.
Teresa Brown.
Here.
Tara Connor-Halston.
Susan Hunsinger-Hoff.
Here.
Maggie Kistner.
Here.
DJ Schultz.
Here.
Erin Stroup. Erin Whalen.
Here.
David Brown.
Here.
Jennifer Wilson.
Here.
Eight board members present.
Thank you. There was an executive session held on November 10th, 2025 to discuss legal matters, real estate matters, personnel matters, and the matters on the agenda. The meeting lasted approximately 55 minutes. There was an executive session immediately preceding this meeting to discuss personal matters, real estate matters, and the matters to be considered on this agenda. The meeting lasted approximately 15 minutes. Now going to turn it over to Dr. Everslock.
Thank you, Madam President. Good evening, everyone. Before we begin our agenda this evening, I want to acknowledge a heartbreaking loss within our school community. Last week, we learned of the passing of one of our high school students, 12th grader Billy Teefy. The family has graciously allowed us to share Billy's name, and we hold them in our thoughts during this unimaginably difficult time. We know that Billy was deeply cared for by friends, classmates, teachers, staff members, and community members across our school district and throughout the community. Moments like this call us to draw closer together, to offer compassion, and to support one another with patience and gentleness. Let us, as a community, surround the family and loved ones with our sympathy and our care. At this time, I ask everyone here to please join me in a moment of silence in honor of Billy Teefy and in support of all who are grieving this profound loss. Thank you.
This evening, Mr. Steve Glaze, Principal of Halliwell Elementary School, will join us to share about the ways in which the Halliwell School community is implementing more explicit strategies to support students in developing executive functioning skills.
Good evening, everyone. So nice to be able to be with you tonight and to share some of the things that we've been doing at Halliwell, things that we're currently working on and things we're going to continue to strengthen. And in this case, we're going to be talking about executive functioning skills. And so I'm going to be talking a little bit about what executive functioning is, and I'm going to tie it back to some academic skills that tie back to a presentation that you heard recently from one of my colleagues. And so you can see how it's all tied in. And then we'd also like to show you what one teacher is doing to promote some of these skills. Tonight is family teacher conferences, so I'm by myself tonight. You are stuck with me. So introducing executive functioning skills. What are executive functioning skills? Well, they are a set of skills that allow us to go about our daily lives, things like planning ahead, being able to set goals, to work through disruptions or distractions, to be able to manage processes that help us in our daily world. Well, these are things that we're not necessarily born with. These are things, though, that can be taught. And what you see on the screen, it's kind of like an air traffic controller. You need a situation from our brains that allow us to manage different processes all at the same time and to do so very effectively and successfully, kind of like an aircraft controller does at an airport. So there are a variety of different executive functioning processes. The ones that you see up there on the screen, they come directly from a book that we are reading as part of our community book club. And the ones that I have circled relate to what you're going to see from one of our teachers, building things like self-monitoring, building our attention and focus, and also being able to plan, prioritize, and use our time wisely so we can get things done in the time that is allotted. This is the book. So for those who know me and know how we operate at Halliwell, we do have every year a community book club. We invite family members and staff once a month to come and talk about a particular book, and we choose one book per year. And the book that we've chosen this year is The Missing Link to Help Them Think. And so what this book does is that it bridges executive functioning skills with more traditional social and emotional learning skills and ties that with academics. What I really love about this book is that it's not just presented from, let's say, a practitioner or a classroom teacher's point of view. It's presented from the standpoint of you as a caregiver, you as a family member. What do you do to help your child? And what do you do to help yourself build these skills? Because these are skills that we can all continue to practice and learn. What I'm really, really proud of, and this doesn't always work out this way, but it is in this case, the author of this book has been joining us virtually during our meetings, and she is hopeful that she'll be able to come to our school district at some point in the spring to share some of her work with us. And so if that happens, I promise that I will invite all and whomever would like to join, because we would love for you to see her. She is wonderful, and she truly is one of the gurus in the field. They call her the brain lady. And she travels all around the country doing this work, talking about executive functioning skills. All right, so the crossroads of executive functioning and literacy is what I want to talk about next. And some of this presentation, you may recall from a previous presentation that you received, I believe from Dr. G, she talked to you a little bit about our work with structured literacy. So we're looking at literacy practices. This is a bit of review. I promise I won't quiz you. Maybe you saw this. I'm not sure. Did you see Scarborough's Rope? Maybe you did. No, you didn't. All right. Basically, what this is, is that there are different processes as we're building literacy for children, things like language comprehension and word recognition, that when you blend them and you bind them, kind of like a rope, you build automaticity and fluency with these skills, and that's called reading comprehension. So when you take those pieces and you make them explicit for children, that's called structured literacy based on what we know about how children learn and how our brain works. Here's the part, though, that where executive functioning comes in. This, what you see here, is more of a passive view of reading, kind of like takes a more intellectual view of reading. But we know that reading is more active than that. So what I showed you earlier with the red and the blue, what you see here are, again, word recognition and language comprehension, the red and the blue, and then combine those together. These are bridging processes related to fluency and automaticity. When you combine that, plus when you recognize that children and adults, that we bring a series of motivations to what we read. We don't come to it all in the same place. There are particular things that we're interested in. There are particular things that we know a lot about. There's a particular things that we'd like to know more about. All of those things build motivation to what we read. This is where executive functioning comes in. When we are able to process a wide variety of pieces of information, we add to our knowledge base, combined with the things that you see in the middle that add to reading as a whole. And if we want to geek out for a moment, if we're looking at effect sizes, this is, this just means that there are researchers who looked at a whole variety of research and a whole variety of different pieces of evidence to indicate which practices truly are beneficial for children. Anything that is four tenths or forty hundredths above shows that it has a very high degree of evidence to show that these are practices that are successful when you're teaching children. So when you look at some of those numbers, you'll notice they are all above four tenths or forty hundredths. That also shows not just, eh, maybe Steve Glaze thought it was great, but you know what? Research shows that these are also really, really valuable practices. All right, so let's talk now about what teachers are doing because they're learning more about this. So I'm going to show you. I have some pictures and a short video of one of our teachers. She is our newest fourth grade teacher. Her name is Ms. Rosenbaum. She has joined our book club along with some other teachers, and she and some of the other teachers took it upon themselves to try some of these practices in their classroom. So what they are doing, and I know there's a lot to read on this slide, what they are doing is they are taking the basic tasks of to-do lists. I'm sure that you create to-do lists for yourself. I love creating to-do lists. I love when I can cross out stuff after I've done it. Makes me feel good. I bet you do the same. But for students, they don't always know the value in putting that together. And sometimes when teachers are giving multiple directions, they kind of forget what the first or second one was. But when we can use to-do lists and we can teach children to do them, they can make sense of what they're supposed to do, and then they can go back, and then they can do things more independently. So if you take a look, here's some samples of some students. They are creating their to-do lists. But it's in how it is presented by the teacher that I want to show you right now. So I'm going to show you a short video of the teacher where she's explaining what she's doing, and then you can see it in action. All right, let's see. I'm going to click it one more time. We're going to cross our fingers that this is going to work.
For our Module Two Assessment, this is what I need you to complete. Finish writing your notes. Then you need to do questions one through eight. Then save and close and go on ST Math or read independently. Okay? I'm going to walk around and show what you're writing on your boards. To start this in my classroom, I have, after I give the instructions, I walk around, and then I call in a couple of students to tell me what the directions were in what order. And then I make sure that everybody has the same thing written down. As they complete, they will erase. So everybody will be on a different level, but as they complete, I will see what level because they'll erase it. Okay, who can tell me what was my first step? Michael?
Um, finish writing notes.
Good. Finish writing your notes. What's the next step? Bridget?
Finish questions one through eight.
Good. Questions one through eight. Then, what are you doing at the top? Good. James. Do you want me to call on someone else? Grace, what are you doing at the top on the computer?
Save and exit.
Save and exit. Then, what are you doing when you're finished? Aiden?
ST Math.
ST Math or read to yourself, whatever you decide. Okay? As I walk around, please erase so I know what step you were on. Okay? You may be getting now.
All right, I think if I click, I think it's going to take me to the next slide, I hope. There, very good. Okay. So you got to see just a little snapshot. Admittedly, this is, we are working on this, and so we're going to explore this further. Our goals, as it relates to this particular strategy, is can you, as the learner, can you, without listening to everything that the teacher is saying, word for word, can you start putting things in your own words so that you can make sense of what it is that the teacher is asking of you? And then when it comes time for independent work, are you able to start thinking about what steps you need to be able to do? And how do you respond if you're interrupted somehow? You know, there's different stimulus. Other kids are talking, or there's noises, or things are happening. How are you able to block those things out to focus on the task at hand, and at the same time, make sure that the time management is such that you're finishing on time? So you notice there's a lot of skills that go into that. And these are things that, for nine-year-olds, you can imagine, are not easily done, and they need a lot of practice in order to do that. So we're trying to build that explicit practice. And as you can see here, this, I think, is very surprising, but it really is true. Executive function is a more accurate predictor of student success than test scores, IQ, or socioeconomic status. If we can help build for our children proper executive functioning skills, there's a whole host of things that children can do as a result. Thank you. That was it. Any questions?
I have a question. How many people are involved in your book club?
So I think the topic has really resonated with people because they look at their children and they say, oh, my goodness, my child is really having trouble with some of this, right? They have a very messy room, or they're having trouble organizing, or they can't remember their homework, or whatever. So what are things that I can do as a caregiver to help my child to build these skills? I think we had almost 30 people show up to our first meeting, and that included the author who joined us virtually. And we're not meeting in December. We'll meet back again in January. But for us, that's quite a bit of people. We normally get around 15, but we've doubled that this year. So I think the topic has been something that has really resonated with people.
Certainly worthwhile.
Thank you.
How do you spread it to the rest of the, I mean, K to 12?
So I will, let me first speak at Halliwell. So from Halliwell's perspective, one of the things that the author has done is that she's joined us for staff meetings. So when we have staff meetings, we try to put a little bit of time into those staff meetings to discuss the book, because every staff member also received this book. So she is giving us some, like, little mini lessons all the way through. The other piece is that as teachers are working on these strategies, they get to share it with others through our professional learning communities. And then the last piece, I would say, is if we can get the author to come here in the spring, I would want to open that up to anybody. So any teacher, any family member, anyone in our community who would like to learn more about it, she would be available.
How the students responded to the new program here?
I think the explicit nature is very settling, and you're building instructional routines for kids. And so they just now learn that, oh, okay, this is what I'm going to do, and as I do it, I can see the benefit in it. And it's a work in progress, again, but that's actually part of what we're trying to do, is like, come back and say, what worked and what didn't? What might you change? You tried this. What's the next step? And that's part of what we do in our professional learning community work, is just to have that authentic conversation with one another.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Glaze. Appreciate the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Hussinger-Hoff.
Thank you, Madam President. The Happer-Horsham High School Course of Study is presented to the Board for Approval on an annual basis. This presentation provides updates on the High School Course Selection Guide, one of which a financial literacy course was discussed at the last curriculum committee meeting. Tonight's presentation also provides the administration's overall approach to supporting our students to identify a course sequence that prepares them for post-secondary success. Tonight, Mr. John Zuck, Happer-Horsham High School Assistant Principal, joins us to share course deletions, additions, and updates to the 2026-2027 Course of Study. Following tonight's presentation, the Course of Study will be on the December 15th Legislative Action Board Meeting Agenda for the Board's consideration. Thank you, Mr. Zuck.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for giving me the time after Steve Glaze to present. I don't have as colorful slides, and I'm not going to teach you about making lists, although I have crossed a few things off of mine. So, thank you. First thing I always like to talk about is the process that we use at the high school to conduct our course selection building process. We start in September. The prior year's Course Selection Guide goes out to the departments, and they are asked to review their write-ups, their courses, and also look at data to see if there is any shifts we need to make based on student selection. That moves into October, where they present us with any new courses they might want to bring forward, or courses that they're asking to drop based on data for us. And then finally, it ends up with us meeting as a team with district administration to approve or not approve some of those changes. And then we end up here presenting. There are some guiding principles that we use as we do this. First and foremost is our equity in our course offerings. We want to make sure that we're providing balance to all of our students. We want to make sure we meet our state requirements. We also want to look at our historical data, our courses that we offer, ones that students want. That's very important. And then finally, we look at strengthening our programs every year. Is there an area where students are looking for more options? This year, we start with our art department. The new staff going through teaching the ninth grade digital photography course for the first time, as well as the Digital One Photography One course, did some comparisons of curriculum, asked if we could eliminate the ninth grade digital photography course, offer Digital Photo One to students entering ninth grade, and just eliminate one course in moving through the progression of courses. I love the idea. I thought it was a great way for our students to get quicker access to higher-level digital photography courses, and so that was approved. One thing that requires us to do is change our Digital Photography Two course, the prerequisites. We make sure that it includes digital ninth grade course for the next few years, for any student who took it this year or in years past. They don't have to take Digital Photography One again. Next, we move into our Technology and Engineering Education Department. I do like that song. We have a course deletion request, the Digital Media Two course. We looked at our historical data there. Over the past three years, the number of students requesting that course has dropped to the point where we were not running the course. So we did eliminate that. And as a result, the department did ask us to then call Digital Media One, Just Digital Media, as there is not a Two following any longer. Moving on to our Business Computer Science Department, this is where the aforementioned Personal Finance Graduation Requirement Course comes in. We are combining here, you'll see a deletion addition. The Financial Literacy course is a one-credit course now that we run, offered to 11th and 12th grade students. The new course that we are proposing to run is a Personal Finance course, a .5 credit. It is a graduation requirement for the class of 20, 30, and beyond, and we like that grade range to be 10 through 12. Some of the rationale behind that is, as a full-credit course, we're not able to get through the same number of students that we would have to get through because of the state requirement. The course outline is one that we worked with the Curriculum Department in putting together, and feel very strongly that it meets the state requirements, and something that students are also going to be interested in. And then our course update is our Java programming course. We added the prerequisite of Intro to Computer Science. That was something that in the past the teacher would waive for many students, and he decided that he felt better prepared students having gone through that he's seen over the last few years. And so he wanted to make sure that was a prerequisite. The Intro to Computer Science course is a course where you touch on three or four different computer science or computer programming languages, so it does prepare them for the Java. Moving on to our Physical Education Department, we are requesting a course deletion with adventure-based learning. And again, that is looking at the historical student requests over the past three years, and the student interest in that course has dropped drastically. So they have asked to not run that any longer. Other courses have jumped in enrollment, so it does make sense. Our Spanish Department updates. The Spanish Department, through some 6 through 12 meetings, as well as Curriculum Department, is looking to add Spanish for Heritage learners, two courses, one, a college prep phase worth one credit, and then an advanced Spanish for Heritage learners honors phase for one credit. Both of these courses would help in the pathway to Pennsylvania Sealed by Literacy that we have. I believe it's this year. We had one student meet that pathway to receive that, so we're hoping that this will build upon that program. The department did some good work with looking at other course descriptions across our area to come up with a way that we could offer this for our heritage learners. Music Department, we have a few changes in the music department. Two course deletions. The treble choir is being requested to be deleted, as is rock ensemble. Rock ensemble, historic numbers, is really an up-and-down hit-or-miss course. And so what they are asking to do is, based on numbers that have been building through the elementary and middle school programs, and what we're seeing coming to us is to have our wind ensemble, honors phase, audition-only, offered in Semester One and Semester Two as a .5 credit. And our majro gold course is currently only offered in one semester. We're looking to We're looking to offer that in both semesters. And again, that is based upon the numbers that we see moving forward coming up to us. English Department, as you know, we changed the requirements for the Scholar's Diploma, no longer required the course Scholar's Leadership, and so we are dropping that from the book. Math Department Update. Somewhere in our building of our Course Selection Guide, our basic math course was omitted from the pages, so we are adding that again, back in, never disappeared. However, it wasn't in the course guide, so we added that back in, so that people can see that, and that is an enrollment-by-recommendation-only course. Our Special Education Department Updates. We have a Literacy Strategies class right now that is offered. We'd like to add three different courses for that, Literacy Strategies Two, Literacy Strategies Three, and Literacy Strategies RC, and those are for, that's reading comprehension, and those are for scheduling purposes. We've seen the need for these courses grow, and as a result, when we build the schedule, if we have the one course, we want to put all the students that need different support in the same course, this will allow us to better schedule, so we don't have to move them later and mess with their schedule. Our English Learner Department Updates. We'd like to add a few additional courses. Our Science Concepts One and Two, Social Studies Concept, and Sheltered Basic Math Course. We looked at what our students' needs were, and making the content more comprehensible for students, as well as developing the academic language that some of the students are missing from their interrupted education, is something that we focused on when looking at offering these courses, and so we will look and see, these would be by recommendation only as well. The Sheltered Basic Math Course mirrors the basic math course and would be a replacement course for students. Eastern Center has provided us with an update. Carpentry is a name change, and that was formerly the Construction Technology Course, and they are adding a new part of the cluster, Construction Careers and Management. I think it's a great add for us. It's something that we know the community industry is asking for, students that have better leadership and manager-type skills, and that's what we expect this one to provide for our students. Next is where to students and families find this information. First, they receive email updates, way too many, they don't read most of them. And then we also have all of that provided on the School Counseling page of the high school website, listed under the student information. Lots of information for students, how to add email to their cellphone, for example. But then you also see there is a button there for Course Selection Guide. Once this is approved, it usually goes up the first or second week of January, and students get email telling them it's up there, they can start looking at it and prepare for course selection. And this is just what the page looks like for students, the documents, the course guide, a lot of information for students with regards to the cellphones, as I said, parents overrides, for example, when students are recommended for a course by a teacher, and the family and the student want to take a higher phase, for example, there's a form in there for that. That is what I have for the updates, a lot shorter than last year's update list. I am available for any clarifying questions.
Parents no longer need to sign off on their children's choices, correct?
Correct. They, we send an email out at the end of the course selection process, the end of March, where we let families know, here are the courses that were selected by your children, and there are two weeks, please reach out and let us know if there's anything you want to change, and so they could reach out to the school counselor at that point, make changes.
We have students that had questions. Lethia?
So, I had a quick question about the Scholar's Diploma change. So, will the removal of the Scholar's course, like, change graduation requirements for the Scholar's Diploma, or will it be the same number of credits?
It's the same number of credits, it's just the elective credit is different now.
Okay. And also, so students, the financial literacy requirement now for the state is one full credit, right? And, or is it half a credit?
The state left guidelines open to school districts and how they wanted to meet that requirement.
Okay, so, the Personal Finance course is half a credit, so will students have to take multiple Personal Finance courses, or just one to meet the requirement?
Just one time.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lilly? Okay.
Hi. My question is about the Spanish Department Updates, specifically for the Heritage Learners course. I was just wondering if there was like a process, or like a test that needs to be taken in order to take the class?
The teachers, the staff members, will meet with students that we can pull information on if they have Spanish as a language that they already speak, and then we will meet with them and their families to discuss the options available.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, there are some popular AP classes that our school doesn't provide. Do you have any intentions to add new AP courses into the course selection?
So, each year, we review the AP course offerings that are provided by College Board. We review the current courses that we run and look at our enrollment, and we also look at, and in conjunction with the Curriculum Department, discuss whether or not we should start exploring some of the new courses.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from our students before I? All right, thank you. Mr. Zook, can you just clarify how the course additions in the English Learner Department, the Concepts Course and the Sheltered Courses, support students differently?
Yes, definitely. Our Sheltered Course is for students that are, had an interruption in education, and don't have the necessary language for showing immediate success in algebra, for example, right? And so, we have the basic math courses so that we can build that foundational language and skills in math, so that they can then have success in algebra course.
So, the Sheltered Course, the Sheltered Course is for students that are English-language learners, or students that are interrupted? Dr. Domers?
I'm sorry, I missed the question.
The Sheltered Courses, are the Sheltered Courses for students who are English-language learners, or are they students who have interrupted education?
Student with interrupted education could be in a Sheltered Course, because they are primarily for English-language learners. So, but oftentimes, our students with interrupted education are also English-language learners.
And the Concepts Course is for students?
Student must have interrupted edu-, must have a documented interrupted education in order to be in that course.
And just to clarify, for the Board and for the community, there is a specific criteria that must be met to be determined to have interrupted education, to be what's considered to be a SLIF student, which is a relatively recent term that's been adopted. And Dr. McLaurin, if you can, can you please explain what a SLIF, what qualifies as a student who would be a SLIF student?
Sure can. A SLIF student is a student with limited or interrupted formal education, and for a student to reach that designation, what we would be looking at is more than two years of interrupted education. We would also be looking at them speaking another language other than English, and they will be receiving a Level 3.5 or less than on their WEED Access scores to meet that criteria.
So, the, thank you, Dr. Domers, Dr. McLaurin. Mr. Zook, thank you. So, the idea between, with adding these courses, is we are seeing an increased number of students that may be eligible or be considered to be a student of, was a SLIF student. I don't love that descriptor of a student, but a student that would be eligible to be considered to be SLIF, or have some level of interrupted education. Adding this course, knowing that if we have enough students that would, that would need this need, there needs to be met, this is the course that could provide that. So, we're not sure at this point whether we have the number of students eligible to be, to qualify for the course, but we want to have the course in place, correct?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, thank you. I have one other question that's a little lighter. The Rock Ensemble Course. We've heard from our Music Department around the students can more informally be part of like the Rock Ensemble through Lunch and Learn and other opportunities for students together, that it's not necessarily considered a course. Is that opportunity contributing to fewer students enrolling in the Rock Ensemble Course? Is that, is that meeting the same need?
I, I don't know if it's, it's meeting their needs. I can tell you that there are more students participating in that activity, because they can do it outside of a scheduled class. In fact, at our homecoming dance that we made up last Thursday evening, we did have our Rock Ensembles, our Hatters Rock perform, they were excellent. There was two different groups that played a Cure Song that was very good, and a Billy Joel Song that was excellent. They did a wonderful job. I think the students would agree. They were incredible, so that was really impressive.
Okay, thank you.
And I actually have the same question about the Treble Choir. Is that going away, or is that going to be something they can participate in outside of class time?
That's going away, and that's why we're expanding the Madrigals to both semesters. Thank, thank you for your time, students, thank you. I know, I told you, you could have candy if you didn't ask any difficult questions. I'll see you tomorrow.
Now going to turn it over to Dr. Everslag for the recognition of our outgoing School Board members.
Good evening. It's my honor this evening to thank and recognize our four outgoing School Board members, who are attending their final meeting tonight. Each of you made the choice to step forward and serve, often quietly, often without recognition, and always with the best interest of our students and community at heart. Your time on this, on this board has been marked by meaningful and lasting contributions. Among those, you helped guide and ultimately pass a student-centered, learning-focused, comprehensive plan that will shape teaching and learning in Happer-Horsham for years to come. And importantly, you played a vital role in advancing the design and construction of the New Keith Valley Middle School. This project represents one of the most significant investments in our district's history, and its impact will be felt by generations of learners. Board service is not easy. It demands time, thoughtfulness, collaboration, and courage. Tonight, we extend our sincere appreciation for your leadership, your partnership with the administration, and your dedication to the success of every student. On behalf of the entire Happer-Horsham School District, and me personally, I want to say thank you. Thank you for your service. We wish each of you the very best in the chapters ahead. I'd like to invite our board members to join me up here. Our four board members, Maggie Kissner served four years, Aaron Stroop has four years of service, Erin Whalen has four years of service, and Tara Connor-Halston, who has eight-plus years of service. Congratulations, and thank you to our outgoing board members. Please join.
Okay, we're now going to move to our committee reports and recommendations. First up, we have our Curriculum Committee Report. Ms. Hussinjer-Hoff?
Thank you, Madam President. On November 10th, during the Board Work Session, Dr. David Weber, Director of Curriculum, provided an update on the Implementation Plan for the Personal Finance Course. Beginning in the 2026-27 school year, it is a requirement for all schools in Pennsylvania to offer a half-credit course, and it must be a graduation requirement, which will begin in Happer-Horsham with the class of 2030. There are no curriculum agenda items for the Board's consideration at tonight's meeting, and this concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Finance Committee Report, Ms. Brown?
Yes. Thank you, Madam President. Finance Committee did not meet in November. The following Finance Committee items are on tonight's agenda for the Board's consideration. Item 8A is a recommendation to approve tuition expenses for students who reside with the Happer-Horsham School District boundaries, but will attend another educational facility in accordance with state law. Item 8B is a recommendation to accept donations received by the district. Item 8C is a recommendation to purchase time clock devices compatible with the new Tyler School ERP Pro software for automatic timekeeping. Item 8D is a recommendation to approve 2025-2026 school year student activity accounts, faculty advisors, and student signatories. Item 8E is a recommendation to approve the purchase of the enterprise management tool for district iPads from the technology budget. Item 8F is a recommendation to approve a payment in lieu of tax agreement with the Ukrainians American Sports Center. And Item 8G is a recommendation to approve a bond financing parameters resolution, which will allow for the refinancing of outstanding district bonds for the purpose of reducing future operating expenses. Item 8H is a recommendation to approve a tax assessment stipulation with a commercial property owner in Horsham Township. Dr. Evershat, would you please report on Item 8I?
Certainly, Madam Chair, thank you. Item 8I is a recommendation for the district to acquire a parcel of land adjacent to Halliwell Elementary School located at 890 Easton Road. The parcel is approximately six tenths of an acre and sits between the school and Lee's Hoagie House. The Christmas Village formerly occupied this property. The district was approached by the owner of this parcel several months ago, expressing a desire to sell the property to the district. The administration undertook its due diligence, including obtaining an appraisal for the property and evaluating its potential uses. After careful consideration, it is our recommendation that the Board approve the purchase of this property. If approved, the district will purchase the property for $325,000. This is below the appraised value obtained for the property. The money for the purchase will come from the district's Capital Reserve Fund. Settlement on the property will be scheduled within 30 days if the Board approves the purchase this evening.
purchase this evening. After settlement, the district's operations team will make efforts to restore the property. It is rare that the district has an opportunity to purchase property immediately adjacent to existing buildings. The administration felt it important to seriously consider the purchase, even if specific plans for the property are not yet known. Through this purchase, the district can allow for any future expansion of the Halliwell property if needed. Consider options for alternative fueling options for the district's school bus fleet, which is also housed adjacent to this property. Provide protection from future development of the parcel that may not align with the district's interests or properties next to an elementary school, or be retained as an asset for future consideration. For these reasons, we recommend that the board approve the agreement of sale to purchase this property when considering item 8I on this evening's agenda. Thank you, Ms. Brown.
Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Facilities Committee Report, Mr. Brown.
Yes, thank you. The Facilities Committee did not meet in November. The following Facilities Committee items are on this evening's agenda for the board's consideration. Item 7A is a recommendation to approve allowance adjustments and a change order for the Keith Valley Project. Item 7B is a recommendation to approve the purchase of a new utility vehicle from the Keith Valley Project Budget. Item 7C is a recommendation to approve a change order for the high school generator replacement project. Item 7D is a recommendation to approve a proposal to replace one of the Stanley Stadium press box windows. And item 7E is a recommendation to approve a proposal to replace unit ventilators at Blair Mill Elementary School. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Human Resources Committee Report, Ms. Walsh.
Thank you. There has not been a Human Resources Committee meeting since our last legislative action meeting. However, several HR action items are on tonight's agenda for the board's consideration. These items include two retirees, Joseph Flanagan with nineteen and a half years of service, Alice Kennedy with thirty-two years of service. Item 9A presents those retirements and the typical monthly human resources action items for administrative, professional, and support staff. And item 9B is a recommendation for a confidential separation agreement for an employee. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Policy Committee Report, Ms. Schultz.
Thank you, and good evening. The Policy Committee met on November 10th and reviewed two proposed policy revisions. Both policies are on tonight's agenda for first reading. The policies are 215 Promotion and Retention and 330 Overtime. There were no revisions following the committee meeting, and this concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. I will now move to the first Community Input section. This is the time for public to comment on agenda items only. Community input is governed by Policy 006. Those interested in speaking during this segment of community input are asked to register with the Board Secretary using the sign-in sheet in the meeting room. Your name will be called in the order that it appears on the sign-in sheet. Once your name is called, please come to the microphone and state your name and municipality of residence. Comments are limited to three minutes. It is not the board's practice to engage in dialogue with speakers.
Madam President, there is no one signed up to speak at this time.
Thank you. Now move on to item five, Review and Approve Minutes. There are the minutes for the October 27th, 2025 Legislative Action Meeting and the November 10th, 2025 Work Session Committee Meeting. I'm looking for a motion to approve items 5A and B.
This is DJ, so moved.
Second, that Susan Hussinger-Hoff.
Is there any discussion on those items? All of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item six, Consent Agenda Items. A, approve general fund check register and voided checks. B, approve capital projects fund and bond fund reports. C, approve food services fund reports. D, approve medical fund reports. E, approve payroll fund reports. F, approve student activities fund reports. G, approve student scholarship fund memorial reports. H, approve tax collectors reports. I, approve treasurer's financial reports. J, approve or ratify contracts. K, approve conference attendance. L, approve student trips. I'm looking for a motion to approve items A through L.
So moved Maggie Kistner. Second, Tara Connor-Halston.
Is there any discussion on those items? All of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item seven, Facilities Committee Recommendations and Action Items. A, approve and ratify allowance adjustments and change orders for the Keith Valley Project. B, approve Keith Valley Middle School purchase. C, approve proposal for stadium press box windows. D, approve change order. E, approve proposal for unit ventilator replacement project. Looking for a motion to approve items 7A through E.
David Brown, so moved.
Second, Susan Hussinger-Hoff.
Is there any discussion on those items? All of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item eight, Finance Committee Recommendations and Action Items. A, approve PDE 4605 residence. B, accept donations. C, approve the purchase of time clocks. D, approve student activities and authorized signatories. E, approve technology department purchase. F, approve payment in lieu of tax agreement. G, approve bond financing parameters resolution. H, approve tax assessment stipulation. Looking for a motion to approve items 8A through H. We are going to take item I separately.
Teresa Brown.
I'll second that, DJ Schultz.
Is there any discussion on those items?
Yes, I'll need to abstain from item G for the bond financing due to employment.
All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And if you could just please note, Maggie had to abstain from that. We're now going to go to item 8I, approve the agreement of sale. If we could have a roll call vote for this, please, Mr. Stone.
Teresa Brown?
Yes.
Tara Connor-Halston?
No.
Susan Hussinger-Hoff?
Yes.
Maggie Kistner?
No.
DJ Schultz?
Yes.
Erin Whalen?
No, please.
David Brown?
Yes.
Jennifer Wilson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to three.
Thank you. Item nine, Human Resources Committee Recommendations and Action Items. A, approve human resource action items. B, approve separation agreement. I'm looking for a motion to approve items 9A and B.
David Brown, so moved.
Second, Maggie Kistner.
Is there any discussion on those items? All of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item 10, Policy Committee Recommendations and Action Items. A, approve first reading of Policy 215 Promotion and Retention. B, approve first reading of Policy 330 Overtime. Looking for a motion to approve items 10A and B.
David Brown, so moved.
Second is Susan Hussinger-Hoff.
Is there a discussion on those items? All of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Now move to Liaison Reports and Informational Items. First up, we have the Student Board Representative Report.
Good evening, members of the board. November brought a flurry of activity to the district. On Tuesday, November 12th, the high school welcomed our current eighth graders from Keith Valley Middle School for Experience Day. Students spent the day exploring what life is like as a high school learner by visiting classes in the four core subjects, along with an elective of their choice. High school volunteers supported the experience by guiding students through building and assisting during lunch. The day concluded with the students' first red and black pep rally, which generated tremendous excitement and pride. To make this opportunity possible, high school students participated in an asynchronous learning day at home and completed assigned work independently. The class 2030 had an engaging and memorable introduction to their to their future high school community. Additionally, students at Keith Valley are really enjoying the new building, including the inclusion of the learning spaces, the gym, and the cafeteria spaces. However, many students also share that they enjoy the learning stairs and would welcome additional opportunities to use that space and learn beyond their designated pods. With the holiday season approaching, multiple clubs and organizations at the high school have started food have started food and clothing drives in an effort to help Happer Horsham's local community. HH Partnership, a club that partners with Broad Street Ministry, has started their 20th Annual Clothing Drive. Additionally, Student Council's Feederfriend Food Drive has officially started on Saturday, November 22nd, where people dropped off bags for donations. Food can be dropped off at the Hawk Stadium or the Admin Building on December 7th and December 14th, and food will officially be donated on December 23rd. Thank you so much and have a great evening.
Good evening, members of the board. As we move further into the school year, I would like to highlight some of the meaningful and exciting events that have recently taken place within our district. To begin, on November 10th and 11th, Blair Mill Elementary School, Keith Valley Middle School, and Happer Horsham High School hosted a Veterans Day breakfast. This event brought together students, staff, and community members to recognize and celebrate the veterans who have bravely served our country. The high school celebration was unique this year because they introduced the Veteran Diploma Program. During this program, veterans who had left Happer Horsham before graduating to serve our country can now receive and earn diploma. We were honored to recognize two recipients this year. Overall, this event offered a heartfelt opportunity for reflection, gratitude, and community pride. Next, after being postponed, homecoming was successfully rescheduled for November 20th, and it turned out to be an amazing event for our students. The theme was to dress to your own desire, paired with the sub-theme of A Night in Rio. Although the date was pushed back nearly a month, the energy and enthusiasm remained high, and it ultimately became one of the most memorable celebrations of the year. Looking ahead, the high school has several exciting plans in motion. CPSA, also known as Cultural Proficiency and Equity Student Ambassadors, is preparing for an upcoming trip focused on cultural advocacy and leadership under the guidance of Dr. McLaurin. This experience will give middle school students the opportunity to discuss the importance of diversity, inclusion, and equity, and to understand why building these values early is essential for fostering a supportive community. Finally, we are also excited to announce that FBLA, also known as Future Business Leaders of America, will be hosting the annual Breakfast with Santa event on December 6th. This event will bring together families, students, and community members to celebrate the holiday season with joy and school spirit. Overall, Happer Horsham High School and our community in general continues to foster a strong sense of community, gratitude, and student engagement as we progress through the school year. Thank you.
Thank you. We're actually just going to have to go back to item 8I because we did not follow proper parliamentary procedure. So for 8I, I have to ask for a motion to approve that item.
I will provide a motion for 8I.
My second, Teresa Brown.
Okay, and then any discussion on that item? Okay, and then could we have the voice vote then again, please? Mr. Stone?
Teresa Brown?
Yes.
Tara Connor-Halston?
No.
Susan Hussinger-Hoff?
Yes.
Maggie Kistner?
No.
DJ Schultz?
Yes.
Erin Whalen?
No.
David Brown?
Yes.
Jennifer Wilson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to three.
Thank you. Now go back to our Liaison Reports and Informational Items. Eastern Center for Arts and Technology, Ms. Connor-Halston.
The Eastern students made us a wonderful meal our last my last meeting, and they did a really good job. The Kiwanis Holiday Breakfast is going to be at Eastern on December 7th. Eastern's Craft Fair is also December 7th from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00. And you already saw where they were changing some of the names of their courses, and they're always looking to add more. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now move to our Safe Schools Committee Report. DeAngelo?
Thank you, Madam President. Good evening. On Thursday, November 20th, 2025, we held our monthly virtual Safe Schools Committee meeting with building and district leaders, county partners, and local law enforcement. The meeting was facilitated by Mr. Rick Kerrigan, our Director of Safety and Security. During our meeting, we discussed the following topics: completion of district-wide October Run, Hide, Fight emergency drills; key takeaways from a recent FBI seminar on school safety threats; county updates on emerging online safety concerns affecting students; and an overview of the Handle with Care Program and next steps for exploring possible implementation. The next Safe Schools Committee meeting will take place on Thursday, January 22nd, 2026 at 1:30 p.m. virtually. Thank you.
Thank you. Federal Programs Liaison, Dr. McLaurin.
Thank you, Madam President. There are no updates for this evening's board agenda.
Thank you. Montgomery County Intermediate Unit, we had a presentation from the Business Services Office. They also included the update about the state budget passing. And then we said goodbye to several of our board members who were not going to be coming back, myself included. I am going to be moving on from the Montgomery County Intermediate Unit position and allowing another one of my colleagues to have that position. There are the rest of items are listed there for your perusal, and there's a couple of attachments, including a legislative report. We'll now go to PSBA Liaison Report. Ms. Brown.
Thank you, Madam President. There's a virtual Board Officers Workshop on January 17th from 9:00 to 11:30 a.m., training experience designed specifically for school board presidents, vice presidents, and directors aspiring to leadership roles. If you have an interest in touring the Pennsylvania School Safety Institute guided tours will occur every 30 minutes. To register, you should contact COLI and reserve a time for your tour on either December 12th from 1:00 to 4:00, or January 22nd from 9:00 to 2:00. The PSBA is saying if you have any questions, whether it's about policy, legislation, professional development, or any other areas of interest, they will provide a develop episodes so that we will have information. So that is something you might want to think about. That's the end of my report.
Thank you. Superintendent's Report, Dr. Everslog.
Thank you, Madam President, and kudos to our students for giving a thorough report. I have to edit my report to take out some of the stuff so we don't duplicate. But I wanted to share a wonderful news about alumni, one of our alums, Alumni Spotlight, student Alice Hall. This evening, very proud to share some remarkable news about Alice Hall, Happer Horsham High School, class of 2022. She's been named a 2026 Rhodes Scholar. As many of you know, the Rhodes Scholarship is one of the most prestigious academic honors in the world. Each year, it recognizes a small group of extraordinary young leaders who have distinguished themselves through scholarship, character, service, and the promise of making a meaningful impact on our global community. When she was at Happer Horsham High School, we knew Alice as an exceptional student, taking a very demanding course load. She was a link crew leader, red and black captain, and a stellar athlete. She was a thousand-point scorer and captain of the girls' basketball team. Upon graduation, she went on to study at MIT, Massachusetts Institute of Technology, where she's currently a senior majoring in chemical engineering with a minor in Spanish, and contributing significant research in sustainable technologies. While at MIT, she's also a member of the MIT basketball team and serves as Student Body President. As a Rhodes Scholar, she'll continue her studies on scholarship fully paid at the University of Oxford overseas, while she will earn a Doctor of Philosophy and Engineering focusing on scaling sustainable heating and cooling technologies. Her work, leadership, and commitment to improving the world around her embody exactly what we hope for in every Happer Horsham graduate. Being selected as a Rhodes Scholar is a tremendous achievement, one that reflects not only Alice's exceptional talent and drive, but also the educators, mentors, and family members who supported her throughout her journey. On behalf of the entire Happer Horsham School District, we extend our heartfelt congratulations to Alice Hall. We're incredibly proud of her accomplishments, and we look forward to seeing the impact she will continue to make on the world in the years ahead. Kudos to Alice Hall. I want to just share one last thanks and.
I want to just share one last thanks and congratulations, and best of luck to our outgoing board members. Thank you for your service with us, and I appreciate all you've done for the district and your engagement through the very last meeting, fully engaged. And I'd like to wish all of our families, our students, our staff members, and the community members of Haprowhorsum a wonderful Thanksgiving holiday. There's much to be thankful for, and I'm grateful for the community who serve. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. We'll now move to our second community input. This is the time for public to comment on agenda items or any matters of concern, official action, or deliberation which may or may not be before the board. Community input is governed by Policy 006. Those interested in speaking during this segment of community input are asked to register with the board secretary using the sign-in sheet in the meeting room. Your name will be called in the order that it appears on the sign-in sheet. Comments are limited to three minutes. It is not the board's practice to engage in dialogue with speakers.
Madam President, there is no one signed up to speak at this time.
Thank you. Any additional comments from board members?
I have a quick additional comment. I want to thank the entire community for a wonderful parade yesterday in Haprow. It was our 65th Annual Haprow Holiday Parade. It's the largest outside Philadelphia holiday parade, and we're just so proud of our greater Haprowhorsum community, all of the kids of all ages, looking forward to kicking in the holiday season. And I really want to appreciate, I really want to send my appreciation out to, again, the entire community, parents, children that participated, and especially to our high school float, which was amazing. And I just want to thank the Greater Haprow Chamber of Commerce and our public works over at Haprow. They do a wonderful job setting up and cleaning up. It really shows off our community pride. So thank you, everyone, and happy holidays.
I just wanted to thank Mr. Glaze, Ms. Zuck for their presentations today. The enthusiasm is great to see, and the new programs that students are engaged in. And also to echo some of Dr. Everslog's comments, to thank Erin, and Maggie, and Tara, and Erin Stroop, who wasn't able to be with us this evening. It was nice working with you all, and I wish you the best, and thank you so much.
Looking for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll make the motion.
Do you have a second?
Come on, Tara. Second.
All of those in favor?
Aye.
Motion, meeting adjourned.